Okay, we're on. At this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen and pursuant to 940 CMR 29.10 subsection 2, a remote participation is allowed by the Town of Milton. Due to geographic distance, our Chairman Tom Hurley is unable to attend in person, but will be participating remotely via telephone. So in his absence, I will act as the chair. Tom, hello?
Hi, David.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, Katie.
Okay, so we're going to get right to business and get down to Agenda Item 2. We're going to review and approve the meeting minutes.
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 1st, September 9th, and September 15th, 2015, as written.
And I'll second that? I think I'm supposed to second that, right? So I'll second that and then we'll do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll second that. Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hurley?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns, yes. Okay, item Agenda 3, we're going to confirm future meeting dates. The Board will meet again on October 6th, October 20th, and October 26th. Are those meeting dates okay with everyone?
Good.
Those are fine with me.
And they're fine with me as well. Okay. Number 4 on the agenda is the approval of payroll vendor warrants.
Yeah, I'll move approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hurley?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns, yes. Okay, item 5 on the agenda is citizens and speak, so I'm sure we have a pretty healthy crowd out there today. Hopefully, we'll have a couple people come up and talk to her about a few things. Can you please state your name?
My name is Pat Greeley.
Oh, hi, Pat. How are you?
You're good, thanks.
Hi, Pat.
149 Bradley Road. I've been a resident there for 53 years. My family's been there over 60. I think there's something that needs to be said that's been going on for a long period of time with Curry College and the neighbors in that neighborhood. In 2004, Curry wrote a small letter, 20 lines, to the neighbors stating that they were going to put in synthetic turf field, which was about three lines of the letter. And the rest of the letter concerned the drainage and different parking structure they're going to do for the parking lot. As the job came to an end on the football field, we noticed there was an anchor in the ground. So a few of the neighbors went down and looked at it and noticed that this anchor was going to hold poles, light poles. We came up and talked to the town planner, I'm sorry, not the town planner, we talked to the town administrator at that time, it was not Ann Marie Fagan at that time, and also the building commissioner. Both of them looked at us and said, "There's no lights going in Curry College." And even the building inspector said, "I saw plans, there's no lights in Curry College." So we went into the planning office, opened up the plans, and there were no lights on the plans. But sure enough, another month later, less than a month later, there were six 83-foot poles with altogether 132 lights, just compared to Milton High School that has 40 lights on their field. Not shielded, nothing at all that was put up. We came up to the town immediately and started talking to the selectmen's one at a time. None of these selectmen obviously were involved at this time. And they were all appalled when we told them what was going on. And they say, obviously, they would look into it immediately and get back to us. And that pretty much, the chase was on, that we never heard anything back from any of the selectmen, we had to chase them down. And when we did finally talk to the selectmen, their answer was, "There's nothing I can do about it." So if I'm talking to three different selectmen in my town, supposedly voted in running my town, and also the town administrator at that time gave us the same answers, then I'm trying to figure out then who's running the town then at that time if they're telling me, but no other answer to it, just that there's nothing I can do about it. So they weren't talking together because as soon as you went to the next selectman, it was the same thing. What are you talking about? I never knew that was going on. So never really got through the grapevine at all. So now it's continued now on for a long period of time where we are just getting bombarded. There's no, four rooms in my house are lit up, you don't even have to put a light on, so half the neighborhood. They have lights that shine, not directly onto the field, they have lights that shine all up. Bradley Road is lit up. If you go drive by there in the wintertime and look over at the fields, you're pretty much blinded. Because they want to light up the extra grass fields around. So at night, sometimes we have up to 100 kids out there at 10 o'clock at night screaming because they're using the extra fields, which are, one of these fields are about eight feet off a property line. Now, if you indulge into it a little bit more and you go into what they do now, and you have no break at all, what people don't understand is when it comes to the wintertime, they snow blow the field. So the fields aren't constant. Now, with no leaves on the trees or nothing like that, you have a snow pack down, it's absolutely amazing. And it's incredible how much light. Now, I've talked to two of the people who are the mouthpieces for the college, who's Sumpanini and Bob O'Connell, and they run some meetings up there, which I know Ann Marie has come through a few times, and it's pretty much the same thing. It's a smokescreen they pull up just to get by. And as the town has definitely turned a blind eye to this, there's no question about it. The rules now that we're going to put in, that we went through the warrant committee and also went to town meeting to put in some articles for us, all these articles went in, but they weren't going to affect us. They're trying to say now, the town is trying to tell us now that these are grandfathered in, though we've been yelling about them since 2004, and the town has done nothing to protect us, nothing at all, to protect us at all. Turned a blind eye, there's no question about it. Disgusting, actually, in my thoughts, since I'm born and raised here. And my whole family was born and raised here. That it's outrageous that what we have to go through. When it comes down to Curry College now, it's, they're constantly renting the fields out for outside activities too. So they get, they're getting money, this so-called nonprofit is pretty much commercializing their fields. In the summertime, you have a Nike Sports Camp that's there, that's 300 to 500 kids per week, starting at 7:30 in the morning and ending at 9 o'clock at night, every day, seven days a week, the month of August and July. And all that money goes into their pocket. They bring in AAU baseball teams, they bring in all sorts of different things to run on their field anytime they want to. They use the field, and sometimes even when the field's not being used, the lights are still on. So you call up the college and ask them, "How come you can't shut those lights off?" And, "Well, they're all on a timer." So whatever's convenient for them is what really goes on down there. Now, talking to them before, there's, there's at least five or six neighbors that have been looked at by the Curry College and said, "We can do what we want to do." And that continues on to this day. Even though this was brought up in warrant and bring in town meeting, they have not changed their way in one iota, that they've made it worse. The noise they use, they use the PA system for blasting music. Now, at the beginning, for the first five years, they would come down onto the field. Now, the kids run the show down there, there's nobody in charge of that. The kids come down, they'd run up to the top of the stands, go into the press box, crank up the music, come down and sit on the field for two hours or an hour and a half before the even practice started, just to listen to that. Now, if I'm inside my house and I'm listening to that music, that's not right. If I'm inside my house and I have light shining in four rooms of my house, like other neighbors do, that's not right either. And as I said, the town has really been pretty much just despicable as far as we're concerned about not doing anything about this whatsoever. If you look, there's nothing on any plans, there was no height restrictions for the poles that went up, there was no overlay of that, the town didn't say, "Okay, you can have that after the 35-foot limit." You know, they have two cellular towers on the campus now. They're also put on, put up under some shady circumstances. They showed a rendition of a pole going up with tree branches and supposed to fit right into the community. And after the pole was starting to be brought up, OSHA supposedly came in and told them it wasn't really safe. So the pole still went up, so now we look at this 80, what, that's got to be a couple hundred feet tall at least, that stares down on us. And of course, they're making a pretty good living off of those poles too, as they give $50,000 to the town. They use Athenon Street, which is a dead-end street, which was cut off years ago when the college bought the property afterwards, and bought the houses that are on Athenon Street, which I can still name the people that live there. And they had to put a fire gate in. Now, anytime Curry has anything that's overloaded onto their campus, they open up that fire gate and they use Athenon Street as their exit, which I don't think is correct either. You know, Curry College doesn't own Athenon Street, as far as I know, not yet anyway, though they're trying, I'm sure. But as I said, now with these articles going in, and I know they've been kiboshed, but the articles in without question within the first five minutes of you guys being up at that, up at my house that day, that was already told that, "Oh, no, these are, everything down here now is grandfathered in." I don't know how the town could sit there and look at us and say anything is grandfathered in, when they're the ones that have let this go on and go on and go on. I mean, it's incredible that this is still going on at this time. You can't do anything. You can't sit out in your backyard house, you can't do anything. The last three years of my mother's life, she couldn't even sit on her back porch because she was blasted out of her house, even though you called the college and asked them. The year after she was passed away, we had a memorial. We called the college a week before and asked them if they could not use the music at night because we were going to have a service at the house. Blew us right out, had to stop the service, the whole thing. Just disrespectful. They don't care because they know they're in cahoots, somebody, somebody up here is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, is protecting the neighborhood. And that neighborhood has just been now, just totally debauched because of this. I mean, it's unbelievable. They have no respect for anybody up there. They look at some of the neighbors and just say, "We can do what we want to do," because they know nothing's going to happen to them because the town's protecting them. There's no question about it in anybody's mind that lives up in that area.
Well, I thank you for bringing this to our attention. Typically, we hold our comments to the end, you know, just as an FYI, but I think, you know, having been in the business of overseeing fields and stuff, I'd like to see what their policy is and see what type of efforts they could potentially make. I know lighting can be changed, where it can be put into certain areas where it doesn't affect outlying areas, and especially with noise, and hopefully have some conversations, or future conversations with Curry related to, you know, some noise reduction and certain timeframes that work for the neighborhood. So I think that that's, would be a good start for us.
Well, I mean, they claim that, you know, they've changed the light systems and things like that, and they haven't. They haven't touched them. They haven't touched them. And when they do say they touched them, it's in the middle, like, when there's pure foliage on the trees. So you might get a little break right now, but now, a month from now, when everything's off, it's incredible. Right now, it's blazing right now, when I just left my house right now, and there's not one soul on that field. It's empty. But we're still looking at those lights. Now, my house is approximately, let's say, 50 feet above the field, and those lights are shining in my window. So if I'm 50 feet above that field, those lights aren't shining onto the field, they're shining out. I have an 83-foot pine tree next to my house. The top of that pine tree is all lit up. Bradley Road is all lit up, Athenon Street is all lit up. I mean, you know, it's got to a point where, you know, you're sitting there paying your taxes and you can't even use your own, you can't even use your own house.
That's understood. No, it's definitely understood, and I appreciate bringing that to us.
This door, remember, doesn't cover them for all the stuff they're trying, you know, the town says, "Well, you know, you got to do this." You know, it's baloney, it's pure baloney. He's being protected, the new president of the college, who's been there for a little while now, has got some, you know, you know, just, I had a call Ann Marie the other night. I called and left a message because on Athenon Street, there's a woman that lives down the end, so I take, make sure she's okay, she's all by herself. And some of the football games, they come down and use the street to park, and there's no parking signs, and they've been up there for a long time for that reason. Now, she couldn't even get out of her own house the last football game because they had blocked her driveway.
Right, and that's not right. So I think there's, as David said, there's more we can follow up on, Pat.
I mean, you know, there's got to be something done here. And the music, they were just talking about the music. They changed the speaker system supposedly to help us. So they took out two small bullhorns that they had on the side of their press box and put in five suitcase-sized speakers. Where two of them actually sit on poles and face right at us. But they're telling us that, "Oh, no, you know, we'll be able to take care of this."
Well, I think you brought up some valid points and stuff that we're going to have to discuss, and that we want to discuss on behalf of the neighborhood as well, and to support you.
Well, as I said, the main thing about this-
Yeah, I can hold up my comments until we have responses to citizens' speak, but I do have some thoughts on it.
Chairman Hurley said that he does have some thoughts, and obviously, we typically wait till the end of the meeting-
Yeah.
-to respond on these, and so he'll probably respond at the end of the meeting, he has some ideas.
Okay, I'll be listening.
Okay. Thanks, Pat, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pat.
Hi, I'm Phil Johening, 23 Parkwood Drive. I listened to the comments after last week when I was, or two weeks ago when I was here to talk about airplanes. And I just came to the conclusion that perhaps a little information was needed to better understand the situation that we have with airplanes. And the first page that I'm showing are complaints by town year-to-date. And you'll notice that the highest number of complaints is from Milton, 1,573 complaints year-to-date. So what I'm trying to say is, this is not, this is not a problem that should not be, let's say, recognized by the town in a more serious fashion. And if you look at the other towns, like Arlington is the only other one that comes close, Somerville, but we are at the top of the list, and that's a serious problem. Anyone would have to recognize that. And so, when you, Mr. Burns, said we have to follow our elected officials, that's what I understood you to say. I think that you are our elected official, and we're following you. So we rely on you to actually lead. And I don't know if you saw that Mr. Lynch got up on the floor of the Congress and he said that he wanted to make an amendment to move $25 million from the FAA budget to rail, and he withdrew his amendment after other congressmen who were on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee offered to help him set up a meeting in Milton to talk about airplanes. So if you want to look at leadership, Mr. Lynch was certainly leading at that moment. Now, we haven't had the meeting, but I feel confident that at some point, it's going to occur. But anything that our town officials can do to expedite it would certainly be really helpful. Now, the second page I show is something, these first statistics, by the way, are from Masport, they're on the website. The second page is a page that some of you may recognize from the presentation that Masport did in February of 2013, and it shows historical wind direction. So if you look at east winds, it's 35% of the time, and if you look at west winds, it's 65% of the time. So what is the significance of that? If you look at the next page, it's the percentage of runway use. 4R and 4L are northeast-facing runways. If you add the two together, you see that it's 31.4%. 31.4% of the time, they're using a northeast runway. If you look at northeast wind direction, it's 18% of the time. So obviously, at least in terms of 4R and 4L, we're getting way more than would be appropriate. Now, if you look at the top, it says, "For safety, the FAA seeks to operate runways that are aligned with the wind direction." So 18% of the time, we get northeast winds, and 31.4% of the time, we're using a northeast runway. What is the point of this? The point is that this is systematically unfair to the Town of Milton. Almost any time that they have an opportunity to root airplanes, we seem to get them. And I think that this has got to be a big concern. If you look at southeast winds on the, on the historical wind direction, it's 17% of the time. Look at the southeast runway and look at the arrivals, 1.7% of the time, they're getting landings, let's say, arrivals, 10% of the time that they should. And if you look at, like I said, when do we get east winds? 35% of the time, 18 plus 17. Yet, you know, we have almost all of the east wind arrivals, let's say, we're getting 31, as I've already pointed out, but we're also taking the southeast wind arrivals too. So someone is getting a break, and those are the communities that are under runway 15 arrival path, let's say. And one of the things that happened was that they say that because of traffic concerns, a single runway is not appropriate in all cases. So what did they do? They built runway 1432 to create a parallel for runway 15. But guess what they did? They made it unidirectional, so nothing can land on runway 14. And if you look at the percentages, you'll see that runway 14 is used 0% of the time for arrivals and 0% of the time for departures. And runway 32 is used 1.1% of the time and 0% of the time. So we spent, I guess I can say, we as a Commonwealth spent $150 million to build this runway, which was supported by the Milton Selectmen, to give a parallel to 15 to relieve us when we had a southeast wind. And what happened? They don't use it. You know, it was declared to be unidirectional, and they don't use it. So, you know, we've got, again, a systematic unfairness. But one of the other things that I want to mention is the fact that, you know, people talk about what should be our priorities in fighting, let's say, these airplanes. And if you look at the next page with raw numbers of flights, you can see that year-to-date through August, I in my house have had 28,386 airplanes fly over my house. Why? Because I live under the center line of 4R. So within 1.5 miles to the right or to the left, all the airplanes are funneling right over my house. And, you know, I live in a neighborhood that should be like the country, but with 28,386 airplanes passing over my house, and when I get 41% of the arrivals, it's not very country. So like I said last meeting, this is threatening property values in our town, and we must take really serious action to protect the town. The last page I wanted to show you was the next one, and this is another one of the things that looks and smells to me like shenanigans. What this is, is runway 27. It's westward departures, let's say. And if you follow the line straight, like, I don't understand why the heading can't be straight, like when airplanes are flying to 4R and 4L, they're heading on a straight heading. But if you look at runway 27, they make a left turn over Fan Pier. So instead of going on a straight heading through Brookline, through Newton, through Wellesley, they make a left turn and they fly through Milton, you know? So you have to wonder, why was it decided to turn the aircraft to the southwest at Fan Pier rather than allowing them to go on a straight heading over Brookline, Newton, and Wellesley? And by the way, if you look at the complaints from Brookline on this, on this thing, there are five complaints from Brookline in the entire year. If you look at Newton, you can see that there are 12 in the entire year. If you look at Wellesley, it's not even on the list. So what's happening? Like, Robert Kraft and Tom Brady live in Brookline, and in Milton, we're looking for condominiums to repurpose our great houses. So, you know, people aren't going to come to Milton to live in a great house, they're going to go to Brookline where it's nice and quiet. You know, it's not a consideration if you, if you, if you have tons of money to spend, this may not be your destination. And it's all because people in Brookline fought vigorously and went to court. The case is called Runway 27 Coalition versus Engen. Engen was the head of the FAA at the time. And they stopped runway 27 from coming over their town. So it's vigorous, you know, it's vigorous fighting. And so, the thing I want to say is that, you know, what do I think we should do? Now that Bland's Phase 3 is coming to an end, I think it's bad news for our town, it's even going to be worse. And what do I think might be something that we could do? I think that a meeting has to be arranged with certain neighborhoods in Boston, like Hyde Park, like Roslindale, those neighborhoods, their city councilors, the city councilors in Quincy, the selectmen from Milton, the selectmen from Canton, the selectmen from Randolph, get together at a meeting and invite Masport to present Bland's Phase 3 and its potential impact on Milton and surrounding towns. I think we have to actively engage them in demonstrating the fairness or lack of fairness that's going on here. And I think, you know, if you draw a doughnut around Logan Airport, it might be interesting to see how many flights arrive and depart over the northwest quadrant, how many over the northeast quadrant, so that we can see how many are affecting Milton, Randolph, Canton, and Hyde Park, et cetera, in Boston. I think it might be interesting to have Senator Joyce, Dan Cullenane, Walter Timmilty all participating in the meeting so that they can see how fair the results of Bland's 3 will be. I think even a representative from, Representative Lynch's office might be interesting. Just listen and observe what exactly is coming out of this, what is expected to come out of this in terms of a result for, you know, we can always go to court and fight them, but court is unpredictable and court is expensive. So, you know, meeting it head-on and asking people to show us as a town and our surrounding towns, what is going to be the impact of Bland's 3, what is expected. And I think Jose Masso, the Director of Community Relations for Masport, might be contacted to see whether he would be interested in presenting what is expected to come out of Bland's Phase 3. The other thing that I think is important to wrap up is I think we have to fully support the efforts of Cindy Christensen. Why? Because this, this is not going to be, this is not going to end well for Milton if Milton wants to be friendly and sweet and, because we've been that way for many years, and look what we've got. You know, we've got a really bad situation, and it's getting worse. I think we really need to consider, like, seriously, a person like Cindy who's a street fighter. We need a street fighter, we need somebody going hand-to-hand combat through the streets, you know, challenging, how did they come up with the assumptions for Bland's Phase 3? How did they come up with the basic plans? You know, obviously, the people on the CAC are not going to like this, and obviously, people in power are not going to like this. It's because it upsets the status quo. And the status quo, people, if you go to these meetings, people always say, "It's a zero-sum game." Yeah, it's a zero-sum game, and you know who's lost? It's Milton. But, you know, if it's a zero-sum game, it seems to me, who loses when Milton wins? Everybody else. So the one thing that nobody wants to do is have Milton win. And so they're going to fight you like crazy.
Well, Mr. Johening, I really appreciate your comments and your passion, because I think that it's duly noted, and I think that this board stands strong and committed to fighting airplane noise. And we're going to hear from Cindy Christensen later on the Bland's 3, specifically the Bland's 3 report, so we look forward to that. But I thank you for your comments tonight.
But I think you need to do more. I think you need to call Masport in, maybe call the president of the CAC in, let them present it to you. Let them show you and describe for you what is intended. That's important. You know, Cindy can go to meetings, and Cindy can be a street fighter, but without the support of the selectmen and the town administrator, we are not going to be successful. This is a street fight, this is a war. When people lose, they get airplane noise, because that's the way it is. And we've lost, now we want to win, so we've got to fight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? I'm going to respectfully ask for three minutes now, because we have a full agenda tonight, so if we do have another speaker, if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated.
My name's Mary Ann Baumgartner, I live on Brook Road near St. Agatha's, and 1214. I've never been to a meeting like this, I don't like speaking in public, so I've, I'm a little bit nervous, so I'm just going to read my statement, and I thank Mr. Johening for making his comments. I've lived in Milton in the same house all of my life, which is, I'm in my late 50s, let's put it that way. The house was built by my grandparents back in 1940, and we are, my family is very much bothered by airplane noise. It was already bad, bad, back in the 1990s, but there's no comparison to what's happened to 2010 and later. We have an airplane highway, superhighway, over our house with a plane roaring by every 20, 20 seconds in peak times, I've timed it. My husband has- My husband has sleeping problems. I've never had to take any pills or medication, but I'm very anxious, particularly over this last, I'd say, June, July, and August, when I know that's when we're getting most of the planes over 4R and 4L. I love Milton, and the point is, it's ironic, because Milton's very advantageous, close to the city, close to the sea, close to the mountains, you know, we're eight miles from Boston. It's our disadvantage as well. But I don't want to sell my house. I've lived here all my life, as I said, my grandparents built it, but if the airplane noise doesn't get better, I'm really going to have to think of selling up. And I was actually looking in open houses at other towns on the South Shore. So I really ask you to please take the issue of airplane noise in Milton very seriously, and please don't think it's just a small group of us, you know, complainers. I don't complain, I never complain about anything, but I just finally said I had to come and say something this evening. Please make it one of your number-one priorities, and it's such a beautiful community, and it's just very upsetting. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we should hold applause.
If people wouldn't mind, in the audience, just holding applause for the rest of me, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Crowley, and I live on 22 Longdale Road. And I've lived here for nine years, and I've loved living in this town. This town has been great for my family. I have three kids, nine, almost nine, seven, and five, and we love it here, and I don't want to move. I'm at a point with the planes where we were thinking about doing a renovation and staying for the rest of our lives, and now I don't know. And it breaks my heart. So I beg you to do something about it, because I don't believe this town. And I just have to tell you, I get emotional, but it's, I love this town. I love it more than I love the town that I grew up in. And I had an incident last fall where my son ran into the road. We don't live on a very busy road, and a lot of the kids play in the street, but my son ran into the road, and I yelled for him to stop, and he didn't hear me because it was a plane overhead. He could not hear me. It's not only affecting our quality of life, it's affecting the children's safety when they can't hear their mother tell them to stop. I'm not exaggerating. This is a really big issue. They fly right over our rooftops. Now, we love living near the airport, because my husband travels, so if he has to catch a plane, he can spend more time at home. But nine years ago, there wasn't a plane every 20 seconds over our house. It's getting ridiculous, and I do not want to leave. But I'm seriously considering leaving this town and moving to Needham, where they don't get hardly any planes flying over their neighborhoods. And I can get all the same benefits of living close to Boston there, but I don't want to leave. I have my friends, my family is close by, I don't want to go. But, and I don't want to be forced to make that decision, and I'm asking you to do something about it, be our voice. Work for us. We need you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 303 Hillside Street, and we're really affected by the airplane noise as well. I agree, it's almost every 20 seconds. For instance, on Friday nights, which is usually a problem, we leave, we don't even spend any time in our backyard, because it's, you can't hear each other think, you can't, it's just, it's not enjoyable. So, and the other day, we were taking a walk around our neighborhood, and it was, there was no wind, the weather was beautiful, it was a clear blue sky, and the planes were just coming over every almost 10, 15 seconds. And so it has nothing to do with the wind or the weather, you know, they say that you have to use it because it's the way the plane has to land in a certain wind. Well, that wasn't the case. So, I don't know what, they're telling us this at Masport, and I complain, I call all the time, and I also will call, when I don't hear a plane, I'll call and I'll say, "Thank you," because, you know, it's been a day, you know, several hours, and I can sit in my backyard and enjoy it. But, so when they say that, I don't think that's true. And I have to agree with this gentleman, that I feel like we get, I know we get, from his stats, the majority of the planes, and I don't think the other towns do. And I think he's absolutely right. I think it's because it's Brookline, Newton, and Wellesley, and whoever's there has a little bit more power than we do in Milton. I don't think it's fair. And I have to agree with this woman, I'm ready, we're ready to sell our house as well, because it's just unpleasant. So I would like you to do anything you can. We've called Senator Joyce's office, not Senator Joyce, Lindsey, excuse me, several times, and nothing's happened. I mean, we get like, oh, we're trying to get a meeting with the FAA, like, trying? I mean, why aren't you getting one? Like, why is that such a big deal? So it's frustrating, and I don't think he's doing enough for us, and I hate to say it, I don't think you're doing enough for us. So, we spend a lot of money on our taxes, and we'd like a little, we'd like something done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Megan Rathery, 16 Longdale Road. I've been a Milton resident for about two and a half years. I moved from Dorchester, and obviously moved to Milton because it was supposed to be a great community. And I'm regretting my move, because the other night I came home on the highway, and I could see the lights lined up above my house in East Milton Square. And I looked at my old house in Dorchester, and there's not one light over that with the planes, and it's really upsetting. My son can't sleep, he can't go to sleep at night. His room is in the front of the house, and that's where all the noise comes in, and he's up until about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, trying to fall asleep. The windows are closed, the fans are on, I'm trying to light noise, nothing. It's disrupting our whole household. And I think, as everyone else has said, I think there needs to be a stronger fight, there really does. We need to fight it. And there's a lot of people here tonight, but there's a lot of people that couldn't come, and everybody is concerned. But I think that as citizens, we don't know what to do, and we need you to do it for us. I mean, we call, I call Masport, I look at my log of how many calls I've made, we just don't know exactly what we're supposed to do as citizens, but we need you to do it for us, and we need you to fight. Because I, I'm serious, I'm ready to move back to Boston. I love Boston. I came to Milton kicking and screaming, and I loved it. When I moved, I loved it. Now, I'm not loving it so much. I'm only a mile away from Dorchester, and there's no planes over my old house. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Barbara Galler. I live on 27 Otis Street in Milton. I've been there for one year, moved from Quincy, spent considerable money to move there. Had I known this plane issue would have been, is what it is, there's no way I would have moved to Milton, knowing and spent the money that we spend and pay the taxes that we pay, and to get this kind of treatment from the FAA, and to have this sort of inaction from the town. I have been logging and tracking online the planes. Last week, on three consecutive mornings, there were 20 planes between 5:30 and 6:00 AM flying over our house. That's three days in a row. Those three days, they start at 5:30 AM, they don't stop till after 11 o'clock after midnight. I realize that we are in a urban area, that we're going to have planes, we're so close, but there needs to be more fight from the town of Milton to get our number reduced, and also set guidelines as to when these planes can fly over our heads. It's not just the number of time of planes, it's when they're coming. They're waking us up, they're preventing us from sleeping, it's very, very bad for the quality of life. My wife and I are expecting our first child in December, and I don't know how that's going to work with getting a baby to sleep in the middle of the night with these planes flying overhead. I've been to several of the ANAC committee meetings that the town has commissioned, starting back in May. I actually tried to join the committee, but I was told it was full. It has supposedly nine or 11 members. Every time I come to a meeting, there's only five present or so. I don't know what the other committee members are doing. Since May to September, I've, it seems that there's the same conversations, it seems to be, they're arguing about what's being posted on Facebook by Cindy Christensen's group. She's the only one, I think, in this whole town that's doing anything about the Sdia, about the airplane noise. I think the town needs to rally around her, instead of trying to nitpick what she's posting on Facebook. They don't have any power, they can't even put an ad in the Milton Times to get a retired pilot to help with the issue. I think the town really needs to get some legal representation here. There's been a lawyer that has reached out, that Cindy's group has reached out to, and is waiting for us to take action, and there seems to be no action from the town to go ahead and, you know, jump at this opportunity. It's going to be one hell of a fight, like this gentleman said, and it's only going to get harder the longer that we wait. We need to hit it head-on, and before it's really starting to affect our property value. I think everyone right now is sitting fat and happy, seeing how high houses are selling for, but once this starts to get out in the town, into the world that Milton's an airplane town, it's, we're going to see it all crash. I'm trying to sell another house I have over another side of Milton, and the first question everyone asks at open houses, "Oh, is this under a flight path?" People are getting to know this around the city, or in the state, that Milton is becoming a flight town. And once it gets to be more popular out there, then you're going to see all of our property values crash. This is one of the number-one issues I think our town is facing right now, and I think there needs to be more action, any action, from the Board of Selectmen to get some resolution to this, or at least start the fight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't normally respond during citizen speak. I am going to mention, I do want to address some of the comments later on. It is not true that there has been inaction by the town. There may be disagreement on certain actions, but there has been action on behalf of the town, and we're happy to address that at a later date, but we appreciate everyone's comments tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Mary Ryan. I live at 132 Otis Street in Milton, and I really don't have anything new to add from all of the other comments of my neighbors, other than to just voice my own discontent and outrage at the situation and how increasingly bad it has become. Planes don't start at 5:30 in the morning. The planes are often going at 4:00 in the morning, and they haven't stopped till well after midnight. It's incredibly outrageous, it's affecting people's health, their sleep, their livelihoods, their ability to work and function during the day, and I would just urge people to act on our behalf, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Donahue. I live at 432 Pleasant Street. My house has a bullseye on the roof, because every plane goes directly over it. I have collected much data, because I lie awake at night with my phone, and every time the plane goes over, I put the time down. But here's something I would really like you to give us information about. I am deeply concerned about my lungs, and the reason I'm concerned is I'm actually placing windows on my house right now, specifically to knock the noise out. But when I put my finger across my window sill in the back of my house, where there's no construction, there's no work on the street, it's black. So if it's black on the back of my house, where is that coming from? And my concern is, what is happening to my lungs for the last 20 years, that I've been breathing, you know, 400 to 500 jets over my house, where I can almost see people in the windows? I'm tempted to like wave sometimes, but I'm looking at the belly of the plane. So if the plane is that low, something is falling out of it. And a few times, I was at Marina Bay, and I looked back at the planes coming in, and there's black underneath them. That's falling on my house, and if I have 300, sometimes 400 planes a day, I am very concerned about my lungs, and I think everyone in this town should be concerned. Lung cancer will not appear immediately, and, you know, how it's going to be tracked, should we, several of us here get that, are non-smokers, but I am really concerned about what is falling on my house. We had a rainstorm, you know, about a month ago, a very heavy rainstorm. My car was filthy. I thought, where is the dirt coming from in the trees that's then falling on my car? The only thing that's flying over the trees is a plane, and I mean hundreds of them. So my concern is beyond the noise, and I get that the issue here is the noise. My concern is, what is this doing to our health? Never mind the sleep that we're not getting, that's affecting our health in many ways, but what dirt is falling from those planes, several hundred planes a day, as you've heard from people? What is that doing to my lungs? It's got to be going in there. I don't have air conditioning in my house, so I am getting all of this air. So anyway, that's, I have major health concerns beyond the noise. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Weld, and I live at 267 Adams Street in Milton, and I complain to Masport a lot. I've had a few conversations with Cindy Christensen, and she's sort of kept me aware of what's going on. But one of the things I want to follow up on with the previous speaker is something Cindy told me about, how Masport made a contribution to Children's Hospital because of acknowledging that, in fact, in East Boston, I think it was, there were a high number of cases of children having breathing difficulty. And I think we should learn from that lesson and not let it happen to us. I've been complaining to Masport a number of times. I look back on the first response I got, which said, you know, "Of course, you're under runway 4L, 4R," and it's because of the direction of the wind that these planes are coming in this direction. And then it said, "The wind shifted at 12:01 AM." And I've, any number of times, I've stayed awake, and there must be a shift change at Masport at midnight, because that will be when the planes stop. So I do not give up on complaining to Masport. Occasionally, I think, it gets a response. If we have several days of planes overhead from 5:00 until midnight, I'll call up and I will say, "Well, wasn't there supposed to be, I think it's the Test 2, where the time periods were shorter, and we weren't going to get 18 hours of planes overhead, and it seems like there's a response?" I may be fantasizing about that. But I have been also collecting articles of what I think is Masport's charm offensive. And one of them is, just recently, there was a dog park in East Boston, and at the end of the article, it says, "Tom Glynn from Masport financed this," and everybody said, "Oh, isn't this great?" But the big one that got my eye was an editorial with this very compelling picture. And in fact, this tells the story of how an Olmsted Park and neighborhood were destroyed because of the noise from the airplanes. And Masport just recently went in and hired a landscape firm to do a new design for the residential area, for the, to, I guess, commemorate all of the residential buildings that were lost. So I, you know, I look at other examples from, I think of Masport's, as I call it, charm offensive, saying, you know, how great we are, that more and more people are coming here, and it's almost weekly that we'll see in the newspaper, another airline has a direct route from Singapore, Jerusalem, to Boston. So the notion that, yes, this is great for Boston, and great for Masport, is being put out in the newspapers all the time. I think the disturbing part is that the benefit is to the airlines, and the cost is to us. So all of the things about how So all of the things about how the Next Gen GPS system works to increase efficiency and safety for the airlines is, in fact, to their benefit and to our cost, because we're living with the noise from the focused, the concentrated flight paths. I still, when I complain, I still get letters that say, "Oh yeah, the wind shifted at 12:01 AM." I, last time I complained, I said, "You know, I'm a little skeptical about what you're saying about the arrivals needing to be coordinated with the wind direction." I think that's acknowledged, that that's just a bunch of baloney. But they continue to use that as a response when I ask for a written response. The last thing I wanna say is that, I don't think this has to be inevitable. I don't think we have to think we're fighting the FAA, and the FAA is so powerful, and Logan is so important to Boston. I don't believe that's inevitable. And I take great heart from Jane Jacobs, who took on Robert Moses in the 1960s, when he proposed a freeway into the southern part of New York City, which would have wiped out Greenwich Village. She started as one individual who was concerned about this, who said, you know, "Greenwich Village is a great residential area, and just because Robert Moses is a very powerful mayor, and has political connections to get the money to build a freeway into Manhattan, we don't have to live with that. We don't have to believe that. We don't have to accept that." So, starting as one individual, she engaged enough community support to fight Robert Moses. And if you're interested in interesting biographies, and in fact, learning about Robert Moses, it was just, you know, "I'm powerful, I can, I'm gonna do what I want." But the long-term, Jane Jacobs became, and I, God, she became a hero because of her stand. It was one person with a baby carriage saying, "This is gonna completely destroy my neighborhood. My neighborhood's gonna be gone." And we've learned the lesson from the West Side in Boston, from the urban renewal, where that entire area was bulldozed by the federal government. You know, that's something that, that we now know was a big mistake. So we now know that this kind of concentrated or focused flight path is a big mistake for Milton. And I, I don't think we have to accept that the FAA is gonna do it, and that, that Logan is hell-bent on the benefits to bringing more flights into Boston. The concern I have, if you read about Next Gen and the GPS, is that it allows flights to come in more closely spaced. So if we're getting 35% of the flights, and that, say that's, I don't, I'm just gonna say, 2,000 flights, and perhaps Massport would say, "Well, we're gonna keep it at 35%." But that 35% in absolute numbers has the potential to increase because of what Next Gen can do. But my, I wanna end by saying, we don't have to accept this. But we do have to do something about it. We have to be the Jane Jacobs of the 21st century, and make one voice turn into many.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for citizen speak?
Maggie?
Hi.
Maggie, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. Hi, I'm Maggie Oldfield of 237 Hillside Street, Intel Meeting Member from Precinct 9. With everything going on and in the spirit of cooperation, I sent Anne-Marie an email informing her of the date of our 12th Annual Holiday Boutique. In return, I received the following letter from Joe Prondak, the Building Inspector, dated 9/22/15. Dear Maggie, in response to your request submitted to Town Administrator Anne-Marie Fagan, I offer the following. Only products for retail sale, which are directly incidental to the permitted nursery use at 270 Hillside Street, can be offered for sale at any holiday fair or other similar event. Products including, but not limited to, arts, clothing, ceramics, jewelry, housewares, candles, soaps, and carvings are not allowed to be sold at 270 Hillside Street, the Nursery. I hope this provides some clarity as you plan your event. You do have the right to appeal this decision at the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sincerely, Joe Prondak. So when I received this letter, lots of thoughts went through my head. But mostly, I thought back to the beginning. 12 years ago, when my daughter Chandler was two, and my son George was not quite one, I wanted to do something to celebrate the Christmas season with them. As a lifelong resident of Milton, and now a working mom, I wanted to do something that was fun and relatively local. I had limited time, and wanted to take a picture for my Christmas card. Where can I go to get a picture of the kids with Santa, I thought? The only places I knew was at either the Plaza, which did not seem very authentic, or into Boston, to Santa's Village, which seemed, at that time, an overwhelming task with such young kids. So we came up with the idea of hosting a community event that Santa could come to, and families could make part of their own Christmas custom. Our festival has been a Milton tradition for almost 12 years now. It has even been voted by the readers of the Milton Times as the best community event. We provide a venue for talented local craftspeople that do not have a brick-and-mortar storefront to showcase their creations. The age of artisans has ranged from eight years old to 80, and at each table is an individual that has put a lot of energy and passion into their work. Behind every object is a story of how it came to be. This event affords the artisan and the consumer the opportunity to connect and to chat about each handcrafted item. While attendants listen to festive music sung by the Milton High School Chorus, or singers from the Boston School of Music, families have the opportunity to snap their photos for their cards in front of a roaring fire pit, or alongside Massachusetts-grown Christmas trees, or with Santa and his friends, especially the fan favorite, the Grinch. While we play host to over 25 local artisans, we give away approximately 750 hot dogs, countless cups of hot chocolate, and dozens of cookies free of charge. And in return, our generous guests donate to our cause of choice. Through their generosity, we were able to present the American Legion with over $500 last year. And in years past, we have made similar donations to the Milton Music Department and the Milton Food Pantry. I am very proud and humbled to be part of such a generous and caring community. Along with the Gardens Club's Green Sale and the Boy Scout Resale, our festival has become a great way for our town to kick off and celebrate locally the first weekend in December. The nursery is so much more than just a landscaping company or a garden center. It is a hub for our community, bringing much of our varied, varied, varied demographic together. We support local artisans, and even promote other smaller businesses who are just trying to make it. I'm so fortunate to have the opportunity to meet and personally connect with so many creative, intelligent, and very funny townspeople. We do our best to transform the nursery into a winter wonderland, and each year, we strive to improve this fun-filled experience. We really try to be a good member of our neighborhood and our community. I wonder why now this has become an issue? What happens to all the other fairs and festivals in town? Will a jazz band no longer be allowed to perform on town corners? Will the food trucks and artists not be able to go to the fireworks event at Hutchinson Field? What harm did this event ever bring? Taking this away would epitomize the sentiment that the town of Milton is anti-business. And to me, this pure, feel-good, free event feels like a punishment against me personally, but it really is a punishment to the whole town. I would like to know the real reason and the basis for this denial. Perhaps you may know of a solution, so we do not have to cancel our festival. And the bigger question that I have for you, the selectmen, is this the type of community you are trying to create and striving to lead? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Is that it for citizen speak? Okay, we're gonna move along to item six on the agenda. It's the opening close of the October 2015 Special Town Meeting Warrant. As the planning board has withdrawn all but two proposed articles from the October 2015 Special Meeting Warrant, it will be opened for the purpose of withdrawing those articles and closed again.
Then I will move to reopen, oh, actually, we have a revised motion on this, right? Okay, so I'll move that we reopen the October 2015 Town Meeting Warrant and withdraw the following planning board articles: the Bed and Breakfast Bylaw, Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, Lighting Bylaw, the Mixed Use Condominium Zoning, Non-Conforming Business Use Zoning, and the Sign Bylaw.
And I'll second that. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Chairman Hurley?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns, yes.
And I will now move that we close the October 2015 Town Meeting Warrant.
I will second that. Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
Chairman Hurley, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns, yes. Okay, item seven on the agenda. We have Ted Hayes, our warrant committee chair, coming up to talk about our warrant articles.
Good evening, Ted.
Good evening, Ted.
Good morning, Chairman Tom.
Thank you for waiting, Ted.
Thank you.
Sure, my pleasure. So, the warrant is gonna go to the printer tomorrow, and I think it's in pretty good shape. We have but eight articles, and I don't know if you want me to describe them for you, or the public, but we have, the first two are related to the passage last spring of the strong-town, so-called Strong Town Administrator article. And, and these are articles to align the language of our own bylaw with the Strong Town Administrator article, and also a petition to the General Court to align the language of a special act they passed in 1989, so that that will conform to our new, our new Town Administrator Bylaw. So those are, those are, I think, will be fairly easily dispatched. Then we have three articles of a fiscal housekeeping nature. And they are, they involve rescinding bond authorizations for monies that will not be spent for one reason or the other. I don't know if you want the details, but we had one of the rescind, one of the bonds being rescind, well, two of the bonds being authorized and being rescinded have to do with medical expenses for our firefighter. And we were able to replace those authorized amounts with a million dollars of free cash two years ago, and a grant from the state of $300,000. And so this is, this is nice to take that authorization off the books. Also, there is a, we're talking about the East Milton Deck later on. There was a $300,000 authorization for a bond on that, which was never intended to be spent, but we needed to authorize the appropriation at the same time in order to spend the state grant that Senator Joyce obtained for us.
Yeah, I think what happened at the time, Ted, is that grant was not assured. You know, it was, it was something promised by Senator Joyce, but I don't think he, at that point, in Town Meeting, because he got up in Town Meeting floor and said he would, I believe, you know, try and get a grant, which he finally did, thankfully. So I think that's why that warrant authorization stayed there, ultimately.
Not sure I caught every word, Tom, but, but basically, the $300,000 can be rescinded because we got the state grant.
It can be rescinded, yes, yeah. It's just why, why it was there originally was because Senator Joyce got up in Town Meeting floor, and at that point, he did not have the grant in hand. So we still had to have a warrant authorization, just in case the grant didn't come through.
Right. It was a question of timing, then.
Yes, exactly.
At any rate, we're also happy to take that $300,000 off the books. The largest bond authorization that we're rescinding is the, from, from the $6,200,000 bond that was authorized for the wind turbine project. Some of that was issued, $1,350,000, and, and some of that $1,350,000 was spent. But not all of it. $363,000 was unspent, and that is being repurposed to previously authorized projects from last Spring Town Meeting, and, and actually, a little bit from two Spring Town Meetings ago, 2013, actually. So, so that helps get another $5 million off of our credit card, you might say, to clear up some room for anything we might wanna do in the future. And, and so that's, that's healthy. So, the next, after the, after rescinding the wind turbine bond and repurposing that money, that's Article Three. Article Four is repurposing, or rescinding, the medical expense and East Milton Deck money. Article Five repurposes not only the $363,000 available from the wind turbine issue, but also about $180,000 in a miscellaneous collection of unspent but authorized and issued bonds. And, and these are, these are the savings from projects that had been authorized in the past, and the estimates came in, came in lower. And most of the reason for that is the diligence of the town department heads that oversaw those projects. And so I just wanna mention Director of Consolidated Facilities, Bill Ritchie, Director of Parks and Recreation, David Purdy.